Pull the meeting to order. It is 4:02 on April 6th and we have this comprehensive plan update work session and it's being led by Brian Shune and Nick Fratsky, I believe, from Intercog. And with that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay, so everybody, if you're, if you've got a screen, can you see the screen okay then?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at a map, little hard to read, obviously, the scale of the map as such, but you should have all had copies of, of the map. So if you can't see it really, Nick and I are just putting it up for reference so you know which map we're talking about. Because the next two become a little bit more confusing in terms of which map you're looking at. Because they look at the edges. So we should really start by opening it up. Were there any questions or comments or anything from the last meeting when we went through the, the policies, the goals, the objectives? Did anybody have any questions or comments or anything on the back end?
What's that?
Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, Eric.
This is Eric. I just wanted to ask a really dumb question because I think I should know the answer to this, but I don't know the answer to it. Okay, on this map that we're looking at right now with the current map that's up, the numbers on the map like four, five, 10 to 40, or whatever it is, whatever the number is, what does that number represent?
We'll, we'll get to that, Eric. Let's, let's clean up if there's any, if there were any concerns or anything from the last meeting and then we'll launch right into the maps. How's that sound?
Okay, that's fine.
All right, we just have three of them to get through, so. If there are no, if there's no feedback or any issues from the last meeting or even the prior meetings that you can think of, we'll go ahead and let's look at this map. And what we will do is give you a little bit of an overview. This map is actually excerpted or pulled from your draft of your comprehensive plan. So those of you that got the full plan, you'll find this map in there. For those of you that are using Nick's and my cheat sheets, you will, you will note that this map then represents artificial areas that we looked at in 2003. So put yourself back in time, I guess, about 20 years. And what we did was we were asked by the then Planning Commission to break the community down into pieces that were more manageable bites. So some people would say you eat the elephant one bite at a time, right? So what we have is a map of the city whereby areas were numbered and there were 41 of them, Eric. And they were just artificially numbered and they used primarily street or legal description or boundaries to select those. So we didn't, we didn't necessarily follow property lines. What we did was we just thought it would be much easier if we broke down the community one piece at a time. And so what we did was, again, at the direction of the then Planning Commission, was they wanted some prioritization of growth and development in the community. Now, most communities will grow from the center out, which sort of stands to reason because mostly services are in the center and project outward from there. So not unlike kind of the stereotype. What we did was we started in the middle of the community and we said, first off, we agreed that infill development or growth and development, primarily redevelopment, in areas where there are utilities, services, streets, access to schools, all of those kinds of things would be in our first list, our primary area for growth, meaning we would start there. We then broke down those areas again, as Eric had asked, and we just selected, you know, it was geography, it was roads, there was nothing magical about it. It was just to break the city down into manageable pieces. And what we did was we looked at all 41 areas and we looked for a number of different characteristics, one being access, meaning paved road, paved road nearby, paved road adjacent. We looked at sanitary sewer and those are, were the two primary things we looked at. Of course, water was close behind, but those first two typically are pretty good indicators that if a community is going to invest in them, that in fact, they're going to grow that direction or they're anticipating growth in that direction. And so what we did was we actually sat down with the map in those 41 areas. And if you go on your plan, we didn't make you a copy, but you're going to find a table where all 41 of those areas were scored. And then what we did was we grouped the scores together and said, those that are above this line would be our primary growth areas. In other words, our highest points. They, they've got road, they've got sanitary sewer, and a lot of them probably have water. And so that was our, our primary group. The secondary group then was missing one of those and missing primarily either the road or missing the sanitary sewer. And so those then grouped down or scored a little less high than that first group and those became kind of that beige kind of color. Not unlike, I guess, Brandon's shirt there. I don't mean to pick on Brandon, but he's got about the same color shirt on. And so for those of you that can't see Brandon, it's kind of a, kind of a coral color. And so those became our tier twos, if you will, or our secondary growth areas. Then knowing that some areas don't have sanitary sewer, don't have water, don't have street, or don't have access to street very easily, those then were scored lower and fell into what we call a reserved area. So we stopped at the city limit line and went through the scoring, which took quite a bit of time to actually go through those areas and make those determinations in terms of access to those services and then scored them accordingly. And then this map was really the resultant of that. And it really probably shouldn't surprise anybody that these areas jump out to you as being furthest from the city core, furthest from a lot of the services and, and the infrastructure. But also some of the things like you see George With State Park largely undeveloped, not a lot of access to a lot of those kinds of services and it's not going to develop anyway. And so really what you're looking at are the outer edges of the community being in that reserved tier. You also notice there aren't that many areas that were secondarily identified or in the secondary growth group. Again, a lot of the area had access to infrastructure. And so what that did was obviously had an impact on, on exactly how those areas scored out. So what you got then in front of you is a map that shows some prioritization for the community in terms of growth back in the year 2000 to 2002 was really when we were working on it. And again, based on those services, based on those access points, based on those things that I mentioned before, what you're looking at then is some help with where the city should look to grow first. Okay, so that's really all that map shows you are 41 different areas. Actually, there are 42 if you count the infill area or the, the largest part of the community in the middle. And that's really all it was intended to do was give us some prioritization based on the practicality or the availability of services. And where would it be least expensive for us to grow? Again, some things may be different today, 20 years later, now that reality has hit, right? And so that's really all that map was intended to show. Any questions about that map?
So I'm going to ask.
Go ahead.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question, Brian. So our job today, or our job through this process today, Brian, is to recreate this map for 2021 to 2023 priorities? Is that, am I headed in the right direction?
You are. What we're going to do, Eric, is we, Nick and I want to walk through these three maps so that you know exactly what you've got in front of you because no one explained it to you. They just sent them out to you and said, here's these maps. We talked about them a little bit, but for the most part, we just wanted them, get it, get them out to you and then spend today, again, hopefully a little shorter meeting, but to give you an idea of what you've got in front of you. And then we're going to give you homework to go back and do some markup on these maps. So hopefully you've got a paper copy. If you don't, we'll find a way to get you a paper copy. We'll print you one, black and white color, whatever you need, whether it be us or staff or whomever. We're just looking for you to take your Sharpie out, Eric, and do some work on them. Again, this map probably doesn't need a whole lot of work just because it's artificial areas that we set. Again, we may redefine some of these boundaries as some of these areas grew in, in time in terms of from 2000 to today. So as you look at those, again, this is just to kind of set the stage. What we would do is go back and reassess based on the availability of those kinds of services I mentioned and re-point these, re-score them, based on the investments that have been made since 2000, whether. Sewer or whatnot.
I was going to say, this is normally, I mean, like one example that you're, as you're looking at the map right now, areas 37 and 35.
Right.
To help continue the growth of Audubon Park at one point, and this was under Mayor Hurley, so figure that was at least 10, 12 years ago. The city of Waterloo, you can kind of see that blue area going down through 37, then coming back up through 35. That's the low, low area because it's a stream bank. The city extended a sewer main through there basically to help for growth in 34, which could not drain by gravity for the sewer. So 37 and 35 most likely will change color because now there's sewer there. It's a little bit more available, so it'll, it'll score higher on the system than Brian's talking about.
Right, right. And we may not see 38, you know, just by way of comparison, change much because that's probably got plenty of floodplain or some low areas in there. And so that might be an area that would still score lower in terms of, of those scoring criteria. But what we're doing is, is just getting you kind of acclimated to the shape and size of the community in terms of, of evaluating where we think the community is going to grow. So that's the first map. Let's look at the map and I'll stop sharing this one and I'll try and share then the next one. See if I can get that pulled up. Let's see here. Let's, I'll go ahead and have you look at the future land use map. And then I'm going to stop sharing this. So this is the, the very colorful one that is in your materials. And what it shows you, again, hopefully you have a chance to see that. Can't see it maybe on my screen yet. Still waiting for it to show up for me.
See, Brian, this is the one I knew about because it's all got all the different colors of like the various zoning districts of a color. So if it's yellow, it's one zoning district. If it's pink, it's another zoning district. So I knew what I was looking at there.
So what we'll do. There we go. Did that one come up then for you guys now?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll just keep talking then. It showed up on my screen and, and it may still be giving me fits. But what this is, is as you look at the map, you're going to see then those same areas identified with the same numbers on them. And so you can't miss them. They line up with those other districts. And so what you'll see then are colors. And the colors, as you probably know all too well, if you've been on the Planning Commission at all for any period of time, you know that those colors then indicate different types of land uses. Typically yellows and oranges are residential in nature. Reds are typically commercial. And then blues and purples and those kinds of colors, indigo violet are usually industrial. So those are kind of the four standard categories. Let's see if I can get that one to pop up for you. My machine is not liking me today. So let's see if I can just close this one down. Open it up again. These were, what we were looking at is the maps. Let's see. So what you're, what you've got then are the maps, again, same areas while I'm waiting for this to come up, same thing and divided into the same, into the same areas, numbered the same, scored the same. What you've got then is really the best estimation for what the thought 20 years ago was that the land use was going to develop as. And so again, we didn't, and this isn't a substitute for the, it's not intended to substitute for the zoning ordinance or the zoning map. You notice that none of the zoning nomenclature is there, A1, R1, those kinds of things, none of those are there. These are larger categories that are, are meant to be broader, larger. Again, you don't see property lines in that map as you look at it. And so what you've got then was our best estimation of what the land use might be way back in 2000. So looking forward, what we did was we said, okay, we're going to start up by the airport. And we worked our way around clockwise, hence the numbering kind of follows that, if you will. And we identified areas that we thought would grow into certain types of uses. Again, very broad categories. And we worked our way around and you'll see that there's correlation between those prioritization areas, the primary, the secondary, and the reserved areas as to, in some cases, whether or not they're even colored. So you'll see that some of those reserved areas, which was the brown, are for the most part, white on this map. As Noel indicated, that parcel number 37 down at the bottom, because sewer was put in, because there's now access, will probably change. It's probably going to go from a reserved category in the priority and white, which was primarily agricultural or vacant, will go to then a future land use color. And that's where you come in as the Planning Commission, is the, the, the question then becomes, what do we think, as best we can, that area, and we'll just pick on area 37, what that land use may be? And using obviously our knowledge, using staff knowledge, using all of us here, again, at the next meeting, what we're going to do is we're going to ask you, by area, we're going to walk all the way around and we're going to say, has anything changed based on your observation since 2000? If you're like Nick and I and you drive around a bunch, then obviously you're going to pick up on the fact that there are some things that are different than what we anticipated in terms of growth and in terms of development. A lot of it on the edges of the community. Yes, the corridors like Fourth and Kimball and a number of those are not that different than they were 20 years ago. But you're going to see the downtown area is vastly different. It may still be commercial in nature, but it's obviously with the riverfront Renaissance that has gone on. It has undergone a significant transformation in terms of, of what it looks like today. So again, as you look at the map, what we're asking you to do is relying on your memory, relying on your observation and looking at this map, what was different or what did we miss? Where did we miss the ball or where did we miss the boat in terms of projecting where we thought or how we thought the community was going to grow? So that first map we showed you was really where prioritizing, and this is the what? What types of uses do you think we will see looking forward? So as you move across to the east on the map, obviously we work our way over towards Highway 63 and around the northern tier and we get down to the northeast site. Where MLK is, Drive, that's where Tyson, that's where the northeast site is for deer, Ferguson, a number of, of larger businesses in that northeast area. Again, we were projecting that to be largely industrial. Does that still stand pat today and do we think down the road that it's going to continue in that direction? So it's us kind of putting our, our hats on and saying, okay, what do we think is going to happen in this area in terms of the next 10 years, 20 years? And so we, we've kind of have to get the crystal ball out a little bit. And then as you work on the southern tier, really primarily from, oh, that looks like it's about San Marnon to the south primarily. Again, that is an area that has changed pretty dramatically, but is still in a state of transition. It is still changing. If you go out there, there are buildings still under construction. That blue color, which is largely in 41 and 29, that office commercial obviously has developed pretty dramatically. In the north side, yeah, go ahead.
Just FYI, all we see is your background screen, a pretty.
Okay.
Lake view.
Do you like that?
It is very pretty.
Does anybody have the control on the other side? Because I seem to have, it seemed to have flipped for me. I don't have my share command anymore.
It still shows that we're seeing your screen.
Yeah. Okay.
Will it let you stop sharing?
Yep. Can any of you? See then? Could any of you see then the screen or do any of you have the PDF?
I've got it up, Brian, I can try to share it.
You'd have to stop sharing first.
Yep.
You've got two monitors, Brian?
I got three monitors. That's the problem.
You're saving the wrong one, that's the problem, man.
Yep.
Just seeing your cursor go off the screen, I'm like, oh, he's got one, one monitor.
There we go. I can see you now. So let me see if I can pull up the, the PDF again. All right. How we doing now?
Yep.
We're back. All right. Yay, technology. Operator error. All right, so again, what we're doing, I'll just kind of pick back up again here. So the northeast site, you can see where my cursor is. Did that develop in that fashion? Do we think that it will build out, if you will, in the next 20 years? And do we think it will look like that? All right, again, working our way around kind of on the southern edge here. Again, this is, there's a lot of floodplain, there's some recreational, certainly there's some industrial use in here. But what about 21 and 23, right? There's some different things going on down there right now in terms of, as you look at, you know, the, the amusement park and some of those other kinds of areas and development as things are changing down there. What do we need to show for the next 20 years? And certainly it's based upon what the existing land uses are today or what has actually developed or transpired, looking forward. So as you move forward, what we're asking you to do is to take that Sharpie and mark as you know things. We're not expecting any one person to know all of the 41 parcels. Well, maybe Eric and Noel will need to know all 41, but we're not expecting anybody else to know all 41, based on what you know, based on what has occurred, based on how things are serviced. And so as you look at, at the map, what we're going to ask you to do is look at the colors we anticipated and then we need to make changes to the map for you to look at. So today is really just to walk you through what you're looking, what you're looking at in terms of maps. So don't be scared to mark on your colored map. We can print more maps, we can do what we need to do. That's why Nick sent them out ahead of time and John sent them out ahead of time so that if you need to print one to markup, what we would say is go ahead and do that. All right? So the purpose of this map is really to take a look at these larger areas. Again, we're not breaking it down to the parcel. That's your zoning ordinance's job. We're looking at the broad categories of land use. So you can see the key up above that we've got just a handful of mixed districts that we're recognizing. And for the most part, we're looking at large areas. We'll let your zoning ordinance break it down with the details. So things like setback and all those other kinds of things will follow in the zoning ordinance. This is where we're talking about use, all right?
And Brian will want to start with a map that has the right city limits.
Right.
Because this one doesn't.
Our city limits go further south now, don't they?
No, south city limits haven't changed, but George With was annexed in over to Highway 58 based on a requirement from the state. And there was a little parcel over on the east side of 18 annexed in.
Right over here, so that's right in here and then right over in here.
Yep. Yep.
And that actually will, will get us to the fourth question. So this being the second question, what we will probably do is we probably will start with a more blank slate on our end. And marker, as we talked to you in that meeting, we just gave you a head start. Okay? So let's stop sharing that one. And then let's see. If I can get this one to come up. Can you see that one now?
Yep.
All right. So this, what this does is this just stretches it out a little bit to show you how you relate land use wise toward your neighbors. Again, large categories, not, again, not zoning, not necessarily the details, no lot size, you know, no lot configurations, no lot dimensions, just showing you how you marry up to the edges. So, um, what, what we did was, in this map, was then, go ahead, and we had been working and have worked in the communities around Waterloo. So we've got a pretty fair idea of the land uses that were projected for future land use at your edges. So across the street, if you will, to your neighbor's property, uh, just within that political boundary, uh, what those uses are showing on their future land use maps. So we've got access to not only their future land use maps, but also we've got access to, uh, a number of transportation plans that show some of these things. So what this map is intended to do is show you, um, where there's basically harmony or accord between your edges and your neighbors. So as you look at the northern piece, so as you look up here, know that this is an unincorporated area. So your neighbor there is Black Hawk County. And as you look to this northeast piece behind the key or the legend here, same thing. That's unincorporated area. And then same thing here. But as you get down here, you've got a neighbor in Evansdale, as you probably know. And how do those edges then marry up? Again, this is a old map. We've got a newer version of the Evansdale Comp Plan Future Land Use Map that will work to overlay there as well. So we'll work on that, just so that you can see if there's harmony in those edges, so that there's not such a harsh change from one jurisdiction to the next from a land use standpoint. Again, as you move south, you're looking at Black Hawk County being the neighboring jurisdiction, and then Hudson. Uh, again, for those of you that didn't realize it, I've probably mentioned this before, Hudson actually runs right down the middle of Highway twenty. So their boundary, actually, east-west boundary, their northernmost boundary, actually touches Waterloo and Cedar Falls. So as you look on the south side of twenty, that is actually in the city of Hudson. How do those edges? Well, they were looking at large lot residential development. Uh, for those of you that have driven down Highway twenty, you know there's some more commercial, lighter, lighter industrial type uses that have developed along that tier for them. Again, maybe more abutting in Cedar Falls case. Um, but they did have large lot residential that they were looking at, developing back in two thousand, um, as that then abutted the city of Waterloo. Then Cedar Falls, obviously, to the west. How those uses then tie together? You can see the University Avenue corridor, and you can see then that those uses are primarily residential, um, varying degrees of residential. Um, as you look at those edges, of course, George With State Park, uh, that action that Eric talked about was a, uh, George With is considered an island, and so that was pushed in through annexation. And so that's how that occurred. That's how that edge got flattened. But you'll see then how, up by the airport, how the area that is airport and then the area around it, which is industrial in nature, as you think about what's up there, uh, there are some business or office commercial uses certainly, but there's also Hunt Wesson and a number of other different industries in Midport, uh, that industrial area that are obviously industrial. And then you can see how that marries up with Cedar Falls and the Lone Tree Road exit, and then those uses that have occurred. So the purpose of this map is just to really give you some idea that twenty years ago, there was some harmony on the edges, and we will do the same as we develop it. So this map will fall back to us to work on once you help us do that future land use map, or help us prepare that. So those are the maps. The, so there are three of them. Again, the area map, the future land use map. And really what we want you to do is focus on that second one, that future land use map. And then this one, that is the edges map. We want you to do some markup. We want you to do, you know, get your Sharpies out. Don't, don't be afraid to get the colored markers out and start thinking about, you know, how these areas are developing based on what you see and what you think might be the, the development then twenty years from now. What, if you could teleport yourself in time forward, right? If you could get in the DeLorean and back to the future and teleport yourself ahead twenty years, what do you think the land use would look like in the city of Waterloo as it relates not only to itself, but also how it relates to then its neighbors? So we're really looking for markups on that, that middle map. The fourth issue that we want you to think about that we consciously twenty years ago didn't mark on any maps was, okay, the city of Waterloo has a lot of vacant agriculture and undeveloped land. We opened the question twenty years ago, does the city foresee any annexation out from the edges that you see today? Again, this map is a little dated. But as you look at the city limits, could you foresee annexation occurring in the twenty-year life of this new plan we're working on? We're not asking you to identify, you know, exactly, you know, twenty-seven houses in a subdivision. We're just saying, if annexation were to occur, where would it be logical for it to occur? In a number of our communities that we work in, on their future land use map, we will identify a different shade or color that we list as being potential growth or potential annexation area. It's not to scare people, it's not to threaten people, it's not intended to be ominous or to be a harbinger of things to come. But what it is, is as a community, if you could see the community growing its boundaries, which direction might it grow? Why this conversation becomes kind of important is if you rewind the clock back to when there was this very large proposal for a coal plant, coal burning power plant, that was out here. And if you remember that proposal, that was not in the city limits at the time. The city then contemplated annexation. And the city had to go through a number of different gyrations, primarily with the Community Development Board, that's the body in Des Moines, that, um, has some review and authority over annexation. And the city had to stand in front of them and talk about this proposed annexation. Well, as you might imagine, it's not shown on the future land use map. So what do you suppose the questions were asked at the Community Development Board? Well, if the city was contemplating growing this direction, why four didn't the community actually then take the time and amend the plan and show growth and development in your preparations for going that way? Well, there was, you know, for whatever purpose or for whatever reason, the question got resolved by a rail right away. And so it, it kind of resolved itself in terms of the annexation, but it's still a fair question. Is, should we actually think about where growth and development may occur outside the city limits? In some communities, we identify what we think would be the most logical type of land use to occur in an annexation areas. In other communities, we will just identify it with a hatch and not use any of the land use colors, so that we're not putting everything on the table, so to speak, that we think this would be commercial, or this would be residential. We're not that far along in our plans. We're just saying that logically, based on where services, utilities, roads all exist, and based on the way the city is growing, that it would not be unforeseen for the community, um, to consider annexation during the life of the plan. So that our staff, when they go down to Des Moines, should they have to stand in front of the Community Development Board again, that the plan actually represents some forethought in terms of annexation. Does it have to be perfect? No. But we, we just want to open the question up. At the next meeting, should we show annexation on the map? Again, not intended to scare, not intended to be a harbinger of things to come, but should we show some progression in terms of, of alteration of the city limit line? So that we're kind of going beyond maybe the twenty years. We made a conscious decision in two thousand to not do that because of all of the white really on that map. If you remember the white on the map. Lots of agricultural ground, lots of area to grow and develop, whether it be industrial, commercial, residential. We could find places on the map that we thought logically that that could occur. And so we stayed in the city limit lines. We stayed to ourself. So the question that we will have for you is, should we change that line of thinking?
Brian, when do we answer that question?
We're going to answer that question hopefully at the next meeting, Eric. What we wanted to do was just today, because you guys were good sports and hung with us longer than you needed to last time, that we just really wanted to get you acclimated to the maps, ask you to do markups on that future land use map as best you can. And yes, we want staff to do the same thing so that we can start to assemble a new future land use map.
Because here's my follow-up, Brian. I'm thinking that there are going to be some community members, just general people in the general public in the community that are going to have thoughts about whether we should, um, convert agricultural lands or whether we should keep them agricultural, um, for, you know, because people like country living or whatever, you know? Um, so that may be a question that community members want to answer, too.
Right. You remember the, the handouts that Nick made for you with all of the input from those forty community members? And you remember one of those first handouts was about agricultural preservation? And if you remember the bullet points, they were a little bit all over the board, right? There were some folks who said, if it's in the city limits, we should look at it as having the potential for development. So they went the opposite way that Eric was kind of describing. But then there are other people who commented, again, when you look at those handouts, or if you look at those handouts, that went more towards what Eric is describing. Meaning they looked at things and said, you know, it's a valuable commodity. We don't want to see it all gobbled up right away. Um, we think that our first energy should be in the redevelopment realm and reusing, because after all, services are more readily available there. And redevelopment and putting the investment there makes some sense, rather than continuing to do what they call greenfield development, which is push out um, into the countryside, so to speak. Again, two different schools of thought.
Mm-hmm.
There will be opportunity for comment, obviously, on the map. The map is intended to be a guide. Remember, this is one of the tools, in addition to the, all that verbiage that we had you look at last time, those policies and those goals and those objectives, and that introduction, that's the verbiage. This is the other piece or the other tool. This and that area map that shows the, the primary secondary reserved, those are the things referenced in your staff reports. So when John and Eric and Seth and Noel present staff reports on requests, those are the things in the plan they probably are falling back to when they're saying it's consistent with the plan. Is it consistent with the map? Is it consistent with the written text? Again, intended to be a guide. Waterloo has always viewed this document as being a guide.
And my comments, Brian, were not necessarily from the maps of the previous meetings that we've gone to this meeting and looked at maps and different things. But I'm just going by, when applicants and developers are, um, presenting a plan that they want to do this, and they're presenting, um, they're presenting before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then they have neighbors and they have other people in surrounding areas saying, no, I want to keep this agricultural because I liked looking at the field. I don't want it to be developed, or something like that.
Sure. I can almost hear that same comment made in my office. So, you know, it's, it's something that people like that. Eric, you're right. They've gotten used to, uh, it not being developed. And that's what they're accustomed to, and any change uh, represents change, good, bad, or indifferent.
Mm-hmm.
And so, um, we know that there's always weighing factors. We know that. Um, Nick and I have done this a while. Your staff knows, they've done it a long time as well, too, that as commissioners in the city council, there's a weighing that always has to go on. And one of the things that we need to make sure that you're using in your conversations, um, which is another way of saying your agendas in your public hearings and, and the input that you get, is what's in a plan. Okay, so we're showing you the forethought that was done, so you've got something to reference or fall back to. Again, it doesn't mean the plan's perfect. It doesn't mean the plan shouldn't change. It doesn't mean the plan shouldn't be updated. It just means that we're putting our best foot forward based on what we know today, and this is it. And if something comes along, and I'll go back to that coal plant example, if something that was just astronomically large like that, that causes the city to go back and probably rethink some of the drawing board, if you will, because you start looking at everything from rail line to services to the roads to everything. It really affects all the plans. It affects all the infrastructure, at least in that part of town. And so it would be natural to step back and look at, what did the plan show for that area? And are we right on the mark? Are we sort of there? Or did we entirely miss the mark? We're not even in the, in the right ballpark. But it's just intended, um, to give you a guide. It's a long-term guide, so that if as commissioners, and staff knows this, because you guys deal with the day-to-day at the counter, is when the question arises, well, why is somebody asking? Or did the city give this any forethought? Does the city show this area being this way or this use? And what this is, is that fallback. And so it gives you that forethought, that historical reference. Again, with the idea being that you should be able to update it, and you should be able to change it. Does everybody kind of follow what we're asking you to do? So we're asking you to take that pretty colored map, one way, shape, or form, and start thinking about the colors that you see. Again, don't worry about lot lines. We're not going to worry about lot lines. We're going to let the zoning ordinance deal with lot lines and legal descriptions and all those things. You notice that the scale of this map is such that even if you zoom in on it, you would have a hard time knowing exactly where the boundary is for some of those uses. And that's somewhat intentional. It's intended to be more broad. Questions or comments? Does everybody kind of know where we're at, what we're doing, and what we want to do before the next meeting? Did we keep it under an hour, Craig?
Yes, you did. I'm proud of you.
Nick kept giving me a dirty look. So, no, I'm just teasing. Nick wouldn't give me a dirty look.
Got to keep you cheerful.
The, uh, is there anything that, Nick, that we need to add on top of that? Or Eric, or Noel, or John, or from staff's perspective, that you think we need to add into the mix before we launch into working on the future land use map?
I can't really think of anything. We'll see if Noel jumps in, but yeah, those are, those two maps we went over today are, I guess... Yeah, those are, those two maps we went over today are, I guess, three really. But are. A critical component of the plan. So we'll definitely want to have a lot of forethought into them. So, but no, it's a great starting point for them.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good starting point to, to go through these and that, that might generate more, more discussion.
We then will drill down at the next meeting and we'll work on areas then on the map. So that we will talk more specifically about uses that have. Grown up, if you will, in those 20 years in those areas. And maybe how things are different, but we will drill down and start to kind of get down to the details. Of those areas. We just wanted to get you used to looking at these maps first off, if you're not. But more importantly, I'm glad that Eric and Noel say that because. I, I'm, I go to their tech meetings as well too. They're nice enough to invite me to their tech meetings as long as I'm quiet and behave myself, but. What they do is, is they do rely on those two first maps a lot. Because it shows the priority for growth and development in terms of the tier. What's the priority? And then the what type of growth is that use map? And those two are, 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 they're referred to in your staff reports. We see it all the time at the tech meeting. So I know what your agendas look like and, and know that those are referred to. Very important pieces that we stay. We continue to maintain that, that continuity between this plan. And in primarily your zoning ordinance, that there's consistency there, that we're not out of whack and not out of, not out of alignment.
Okay, Brian?
Yep.
I have a question. And my question is, where's the table? To what corresponds to the 41 areas you were talking about earlier in the meeting? You were talking about the, the map of the 41 areas. And then you were saying in the text, there's a table that corresponds to the map. Where is that table?
It's actually in the plan, Eric. And it's right by. It's right by that map that showed those 41 areas. And if I can find the plan here quick, it's actually right there. It's a large table. Shows the 41 areas and it shows then the scores as a summary.
Page 49, correct?
Got her there for me? There you go. Eric's got it.
Forty, you said 49, Eric?
Yep, should be the page right before the growth area map.
And the growth area map is the one that folds out of the book?
What was that last question?
That growth area map is the thing that can fold out of the book, right?
No, that's the future land use map.
Okay.
It's the one that labels everything as primary, secondary.
Yeah, I've got it.
You got it, Eric?
Yeah, I think so.
Can you guys see that one?
Isn't it up on your screen, Brian?
What's that? Can you see them? Can you see the plan?
Oh, oh.
No. Okay. I'll get to the page. So it'll make you dizzy.
I got it. I had it.
Do you have it, Eric?
Yeah, I do. I have it.
Okay. All right, so. Can you guys see that? The plan? Okay, good. So here's the criteria that we use to generate the points. So those were the factors we used in order to generate the scores. So this is on, the PDF page is like 51. It's table 29. I don't mean to make you dizzy. So there's how we define, define the primary factors in the secondary. Which then correlates with those growth areas, the colors on the map, those three colors. And then as Eric pointed out, table 31. Actually shows, the first column shows the site. So it numbers from one to 41. And you can then see those scores, if you will, as they tally. To the right-hand side. And you see that the highest scoring parcel had 28 points. I'm sorry, 30 points, down just a bit. So 31 is, looks like that's the highest. I'm sorry. There's a 31 in there. So by area then. We then define using color. Primary, secondary, reserved. So the range for a primary was between 24 and 31 points. So there was about a seven-point range. Likewise for secondary. And then really anything under that was a reserved.
And that was according to like the pieces that they had, whether they were. Whether they had all the pieces they needed or whether they were missing like the sewer and the things you were talking about.
Right, right, right. And again, don't mean to belabor it. For those of you that don't like numbers or statistics. If you're like my wife, she always tells me, Brian, math doesn't have letters in it. So she doesn't like algebra. So if you don't like math. Just know that we actually looked at mean, median and mode. So those kind of center point measurements. And then that was what helped us then draw the colors on those areas. So if you don't like that part, rely on what you know is going on in those areas. You know what's going on there, just like we do. I've lived in, in the area for 30 years. So I've got a pretty good handle land use wise, what's been growing up in those areas as well too. So it's page 49, as Eric said, is the table. That's the numbered page. And then the map follows right behind it. And then that fold-out map, the bigger map, the future land use map is down the road just a little bit. So you can see what's included, the text, what's included when we say residential. What's included when we say commercial. Again, it's intended to be very broad categories. It's not meant to be exact. It's not a blockbuster video versus a, a different video. They don't exist anymore, but it's intended to be. Large categories that group together. Okay? There's another table then, table 33 then, that identifies what we thought would be the future, likely future land uses. Of those areas. And then the map follows right behind it. We just didn't give you all the tables because we didn't know if you liked all the math or not. If you liked the math, go ahead and, and dig into it in your plan. Otherwise, that is all I've got.
I was gonna say, this is dope. But I mean, I, I think, you know, the tables and, and like I said, yeah, if you guys wanted us to send them to you, we can. I mean, one of the nice things about the tables is looking at. So there is a systematic approach to figuring out the primaries and all that and how the land use map ties in with the city's. Capital improvements program that we do a five-year plan for, but update every year for infrastructure prioritization and all that. So it all kind of ties in together of. What we're looking at for infrastructure, where we place it, what type, what sizes we place in, in areas. Based on their potential for land use for water sewer needs and all that. So it's kind of a, kind of helps tie it all back together, but like Brian says, a lot of people don't like math, so. It's not necessarily the funnest part of, of the land use stuff. That was just to show you I was listening, Brian.
Thanks, Noel. That's it for me, I guess.
Hey, anybody else got any discussion items or anything you want to talk about, even about what we talked about today? I, I just have one question and that is, has any thought been given to meeting in person?
Yes.
Good question.
We, yes, we will be getting information on that out soon. The regular P and Z meeting next meet, next week will still be virtual only. But after that, starting with meetings in May. It is anticipated that in-person meetings will come back. The discussion is on if we'll do hybrid, in-person and. Zoom. There's. We did hybrid before. We can probably make hybrid work again. It adds to a little bit of complication, but yes, we will either be back. In May, in-person or hybrid, in-person slash virtual.
Um, Eric, I just wanted to put out my two stunts on the table. That for right now, I prefer a hybrid version of the two choices, either in-person or. Having it hybrid meetings, I would prefer hybrid so that people who feel more comfortable right now. Having it be hybrid that they, that their needs be met and people who can, people who want to get together. In-person, they have that option too.
Yep.
Well, am I?
I, I agree.
Am I correct? Is the city council starting their in-person meetings coming up next month?
Yeah, yes, the city council intends to, and I haven't heard if they're gonna. Do hybrid, but they intend to switch in May too. So we're following their lead.
All right, thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And let's go. We'll see you next week.